Ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. We're going to start our meeting with the reports of the committees. We're going to start with our student reps. Hi, go right ahead.
I hope you're having a thrilling Thursday. Midterm exams have begun at Massey. Students have completed their red day exams and will have a full school day tomorrow to review for their upcoming white day tests. In the case of another snow day tomorrow, the schedule will be pushed back by one day and this review will take place on Monday. The prom fashion show is currently looking for senior volunteers to model. For those interested, please check your school email or in the main office. Fifty total students will be selected and the applications must be submitted by tomorrow, January 19th.
The Spring Musical was recently announced as footloose. Auditions take place this week and we are so excited for the show in March. Girls' basketball is on a huge winning streak with a record of 10-1 after their victory against Pennell yesterday. Boys' basketball also had a huge victory over Pennell yesterday and will take on Kobe Cathedral home tomorrow night. Boys' ice hockey also had a big win, beating the number one seed and took home a win yesterday against JBWA. Massey Robotics dominated another competition on Saturday at Bolton. Team 4478E pulled out another victory, claiming tournament champion for the third competition in a row, as well as the excellence award, while teams 4478M, K, and A were all tournament finalists. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Any board members have any committee reports? No, okay, I'll let the board know. Health and safety met today via Zoom and all of the buildings are doing their appropriate drills and they're going to be having an after-action review of the smoke condition at Jackie Hollow. So we'll get some feedback on that, but it all seemed to all go very well. All right, we're going to move on to public participation. Marie Blake. Hi, Marie, go ahead when you're ready.
Marie Blake, 359 Wheeler Road. As the football saga continues, your consensus to hire outside council was on July 5th. It was July 6th when the coaches were put on paid administrative leave. And to my surprise, I noticed in my FOI request that Attorney Murphy's first service fee was July 6th as well. So I'm guessing a retainer or letter of engagement was drawn up, discussed, and signed within 24 hours of your consensus. I have also asked for a copy of this retainer through my FOI request between the Monroe Board of Education and Canaan Escalera and McHale and was told I couldn't have access to it as it was not in the Monroe Board of Education office, but in Seedorf's office because he retained the service of Dan Murphy for the Monroe Board of Education. This is another confusing matter. If the Monroe Board of Education is the client and the one paying the bills to this law firm, then how can you not have the retainer in your possession? I do believe that it is in Mr. Seedorf's office, but why doesn't the Monroe Board of Education at least have a copy in their possession? Questions, 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 and very few answers. My second comment is about a proposed policy change. On tonight's policy agenda is an item to amend the board's bylaw 9321.6 on recording Board of Education meetings. It currently reads, "Board of Education meetings will be recorded" and the proposal is to change it to read, "Regular Board of Education meetings will be recorded." This implies that special meetings and emergency meetings will no longer be recorded. According to the Freedom of Information Commission, a special meeting by definition is a meeting that does not fall on a regular meeting date, but 24-hour notice of such meeting is given to the public. An emergency meeting, on the other hand, does not require notice to be given, hence its title. Beware, however, that since notice is not given to the public for an emergency meeting, the threshold set by the state is very high as to what is considered to be a true emergency. All three types of meetings allow for executive sessions, public board discourse, public board motions, and public board votes. This new language will exclude the recording of special and emergency meetings. If this proposal passes, I believe there will be further disconnect between this board and our community. I am obviously against this proposed change. I would like this board to embrace inclusion of the community rather than exclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on. Item number five, discussion and possible action regarding football coach. May I have a motion for the following? The Board of Education hereby moves into, enter into executive session for the following purposes. Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 1206E and 1210B10, to review and discuss written communications from the board's counsel regarding discussions concerning a potential resolution of the proceedings involving the Massey football coach under Connecticut General Statute, Sections 10222D and 10222E, and pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 1206A, to discuss the performance and employment of the football coach, and pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, 1206B, to discuss pending claims, and pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, 1206E and 1210B17, to review and discuss documents that may be personally identifiable students in the Monroe Public Schools. The board further invites Attorney Stephen Seedorf into executive session and he will be on the phone with us. Can someone make that motion, please? Alan, second? Any discussions? I'm sorry, the second is by Dennis. No discussion, all in favor? I'm sorry, raise your hands again. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, any against? Any abstentions? You abstaining? Two, okay, thank you. All right, we are in executive session at 7:09. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we, I've called the board out of executive session at 7:41 and I'd like to know if someone would like to make the following motion. The Board of Education hereby moves to accept and approve the settlement agreement discussed in executive session regarding the return of the head coach for the Massey High School football team for the 2024 for the 2024 season as set forth in the agreement. The board further delegates to the board chair the authority to sign the agreement on behalf of the board and to execute any further documents if required to finalize such agreement. The board further directs Attorney Seedorf to communicate this board's motion with the attorney for the coach and to otherwise take the necessary actions to finalize such agreement. Who would like to make this motion? Justin, can I have it seconded? Alan, any discussion?
While I've struggled with the decision on whether to accept this settlement based on things that have been brought to our attention, ultimately, I will be voting to approve the agreement for two very specific reasons. First, the agreement sets forth specific conditions for Coach Christie and his staff and these conditions speak to and address to the concerns that I had on this matter. Second, it's no secret that this matter has taken way too long and divided our community and I would really like to put that division to rest today and move forward.
Any further discussion by the board? I'm going to call the vote, all in favor? Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to continue on with the rest of the meeting. The report of the chair? I have no report. We want to take a pause for a minute, that's okay? I'm going to move forward with the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes? Board, no? Does anyone have any question on the warrants? No? Any questions on the budget transfer? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Justin, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the report of the superintendent. Joe.
Got it. I want to thank once again the administrative team for being here today. I know, you know, we're going to hopefully approve a budget tonight. I know it needs to be approved soon and then it moves on in the process. And as I've said repeatedly, you know, this is not a, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. We know as things change between now and referendum, we will continue and we're committed to continuing to work with the First Selectman's Office and the Board of Finance specifically because they're the other, the two agencies that can adjust our budget. I just had a couple of things, I know Dave you had asked me for some info, I just wanted to share with you guys. But I came across, you know, I was looking at our enrollment and just, I just want to put things into perspective and it is not lost on me that this budget is, you know, higher than ones in the past. We knew this was coming with the, with increasing enrollment, we knew this was coming, especially with the loss of the RFSR funds and I've been talking about enrollment for quite a while now. But I thought, you know, as I was looking at this and I always talk about that 2018-19 year because that was the year, you know, when our decreasing enrollment kind of stopped. We were decreasing, decreasing, decreasing from, you know, like around 2010 all the way through to 1819, we decreased quite significantly. So we were down to 3,118 kids. Since then, and we, since then, we have added students, we have added staff for sure. I'm not saying we haven't. And really, the point of this is just to put into perspective what's happened in the years between 2018-19 and today. Because today, when I pulled, you know, on October 1st, we had 3,470 students. We've gotten 22 students since October 1st already. Today, when we pulled the enrollment report, we have 3,492 students. There are 374 more students in the Monroe Public School system now than there, than there was in, in 2018-19. To put that into perspective, in grades K through 5 at Monroe Elementary, we have 337 students. So we've added a whole K through 5 school. I mean, again, now this is spread out through the district, but just to put it into perspective, we've added more than a school's worth of K through 5 students in our district from 1819 to today. Just, just to put things into perspective. I know we've talked about enrollment ad nauseam and, you know, Monroe continues to be a desirable place. We know we're going to have challenges coming down the pipe. We've got, you know, housing developments that look like they're likely going to be approved and, you know, I don't, you know, interest rates being high could be helping us in the short term, but I think, you know, I think we know where this is all going. So I just wanted to share that with you. It was a way for me, as I thought about this, I'm like, 374 students, I'm like, that's more students than we have in one of our K through, you know, K through 5. If I added pre-K, it'd be, it'd be a little bit more than 374 students, but. Dave, you had asked me to put together the staffing request, this was the piece that we had looked at before, and, and basically, the, you know, the dollar cost to these, to these positions. And this is what we've, we've put in the budget. So I just want to, I just want to explain a couple pieces here. So assistant principal, 10-month position, kind of ballpark, and that's actually not even a position that exists in the bargaining unit now, but based off of, you know, our best estimates, you know, that's what we use. The teachers at, you know, social studies at Massey, special ed at Massey, you know, we, you know, use as a placeholder a masters plus three, it's hard to find anyone with anything less than that now. Could get a little lucky with the, with the social studies teacher, at least back when I was younger, it was a little bit easier to get a social studies teacher at that because there was, there was a lot of them. Ironically, social studies is actually a shortage area right now, which I thought would never, I'd never see the day.
A lot more history.
What's that?
It's a lot more history.
There's a lot of history behind that. The math interventionist position at Jackie Hollow, again, we budget it at the same, at the same rate, but it's really to the budget, I just want to, I just want to be clear. In the budget, it's really only a $30,000 increase. So the position would be a 77 to 40, it would really be a $30,643 increase because it's offset by those non-certified reductions. That, remember, we talked about reducing two non-certified math interventionists. You see on down the line here, the counselor at Stepney, the speech language pathologist at Stepney, the special ed at Stepney. And then same thing, you know, there's actually an increase of a .4 sped teacher and this one, you know, it should kind of jump out at you. Again, we're budgeting around 77 to 40, which would only be 44, a little over $4,400 more than what we're paying now because right now we have someone who will be leaving the district next year. It was a retired teacher who came back, who's on the doctoral lane, is at the, at the top step. We would not be hiring someone at the top step. So to get .4 more of a person, it would only cost us $4,400, you know, $4,400 extra to get, you know, a lot more, you know, a lot more time from the person. And then the non-certified positions, we talked about the armed school security officer, that's the salary there. The lunch and recess pay is, this is, I said, this is a kind of a low-cost item, they're $9,800 each. So the total for the, for the five of them, two at Stepney, two at Fawn Hollow, one at Monroe Elementary, to just under $50,000, so 98.55 each. And then the reduction of the two Jackie Hollow. So I just wanted to, you know, cheer them up there. I will, you know, open it up.
Can you put that other slide on one? There you go.
This one?
Can you leave? No, go back one.
Okay.
Leave that one up. And then December fund activity statement? Anybody have anything on that or?
I got really excited about the budget.
I know you did. Drilling you back in.
No one, no one stopped me on that.
Yeah, so, so the, you know, 23-24 budget is tracking fine right now. I will have some budget transfers over the next month or so, I'll be presenting to you. But it's just, it's just moving money around, overall, we're in good shape. The cafeteria funds and the special revenue fund are, you know, there's, there's no, no concerns at this point. The only thing I did want to mention on the NSLP cafeteria fund, we are running at a deficit this year, but that's intentional because we have fund balance that we have to utilize pursuant to the state because our fund balance was, was heavy, so.
Okay.
We're good there.
Any questions for Joe or Ron on the December fund activity statement? Okay, hearing none, we're going to go to unfinished business.
Let me start again.
You don't have to repeat that. Thank you. Follow-up question and answers of the budget presentations and then we'll move to new business to, to adopt it, which we have to do tonight because of our, our delay with the snow. Joe, the numbers on the, on the next slide, you don't have to change it. But I know when you and Ron calculated that, correct me if I'm wrong, those included your, your best assumptions as far as medical, payroll, taxes, and all that stuff?
This is, this is salaries.
Is that just salaries?
This is just salaries.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we did include, we did add to benefits, I believe, when we, when we put that in.
But it's still at 15%.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, and then that was, thanks for the segue, Dennis, that was my next question. Ron, we were budgeting for 15%. If we hear, you know, by April usually, that we're going to be down to that 10, 11, 12, what dollar amounts are we looking at? Are we looking at half a million, a million, or any estimates on that?
So I believe it's, I want to say it's in the 500 range, 500 to 600, yeah.
Okay, so that would be.
So it'd be a little less than a percent on our budget. So about $700,000 would be a percent. $600,000.
I asked Ron to bring the spreadsheet with him so that we.
Yeah, so that would bring it, you know, we're at 715 right now, that would bring it down to about 6, 6.4.
That's considerable savings and all indications are is that it will come down, correct?
That, right now, that's what we're being told. I mean, it's still, I mean, they're, they're shopping it, so.
Yeah, but we still want to budget it at 15 so we don't get caught off guard.
Yeah, I wouldn't move it at this point.
Okay. The Board of Finance does that.
And I think that's the, that was the purpose of my statement before about the, you know, this being a marathon, not a sprint. You know, as, if we get firm numbers, if they say, hey, this is where we are, you know, from, from the insurance carrier, we share that with, with, if it's the Board of Finance, if it's in their hands at that point or if it's in the First Selectman's hands at that point, we share with them.
That's a, that's a great point, but it also goes, it's beyond healthcare, right? We're at 16.4% now for special ed. I mean, we have unfunded mandates that keep coming, right? Anything can change at any time, so this isn't a static budget.
Absolutely.
It's going to be rolling, right?
It's a living document.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And Steve, that would be adjusted by Board of Finance, correct, in April when you have the firm number? Okay. Right, right. So they would have all the final numbers prior to referendum, obviously. If I, if I can start with one thing, I think we had talked about with the pending facilities study is looking at putting off the paving at Monroe L. Just, just putting that off, which would save a half a million dollars of bonding. As far as capital, I think, I think that was all that we had, we had looked at, correct? As far as on the capital side, any questions on that?
For this year, yeah.
Yeah, this year, right, right, yeah, I don't want to get into.
Is Monroe L the only school that was supposed to get paved?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes, this year, this one year.
Okay. All right, and then I think the next biggest thing for us to discuss is just the, the request for the new staff. You know, Joe, go back that one slide. You know, that slide behind me. Are we all good with adding all of these positions? I mean, I think, you know, the math intervention is, you know, is a, is a no-brainer, we need to get that done, you know, the counselors, spec ed. I think, I think we're at the point for the assistant principal at Fawn Hollow. We're there, past the point, yeah. Any other thoughts, ideas about these positions or anything else in the budget before we move to new business to adopt it?
I just had a, it was a thought on the, the principal position. That was, let me find my notes from.
Assistant principal.
The assistant principal, yeah. Would there be any benefit of having a position created where all the elementary schools, all the elementary school principals report up to, I don't know what that title would be, but.
Oh, like, I know what you're trying to say. Like an elementary supervisor, kind of, not.
I don't know if it would be a dean, because that's not the right, I guess, term for elementary school, like a dean that oversees then all of the elementary schools.
Fairfield has that, what do they call it, Joe, where there's like the different levels of like assistant superintendents that.
That's why.
Alan, what? They used to, it was like a.
In Fairfield?
Yeah, I don't know if they still have that position.
They do, I.
Director of Elementary Education or something like that.
Because we have like a.
Is that what you mean?
Something, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
It's like an assistant superintendent.
Yeah, we have like different levels like that.
Having met with them and seen them interact, they all work as a body as is. There's a lot of overlap between the assistant principals, the principals, and working together, crossover in what they're doing. I don't, the fact of happening, when you get to meet them and talk to them versus having a, a body in charge of that, it, it actually is working really well, the integration between all the schools and the principals, or is outstanding. And they share resources and share people left and right, so. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding when I, when I met with them and talked to them.
I think that to have somebody that would like supervise them, it would have to be someone like at the assistant superintendent level and that would be a significant salary.
Oh, whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Much higher than an administrator.
Who do they report to?
They report to me. It's a dotted line to Sheila.
I support the position, I was just thinking that there's.
Yeah.
Yeah, a way to do it, yeah.
Yeah, this position is really more to, to help with the day-to-day, the, like I said, discipline, routine, SRBI.
Teacher eval.
You know, PPTs, teacher evaluation, yeah.
Just given the psychosocial issues that are in the school today, everything here is desperately needed.
And I know we're talking one-to-one Chromebook policy later on, but are we comfortable with that? We want to move forward funding that.
We just talked about it tonight, I guess.
Yeah, the policy will be probably in May, once the budget really.
Yeah.
You know, once the budget is approved, so we know that we have it. But we did, we started discussing the policy and stuff. And then I talked to Joe, we'll send out something closer so that parents are aware that we'll be having one-on-one, so they don't have to go out and purchase a computer and things like that.
Yeah, that was a good idea.
Yep.
To send something out.
Yep.
So that they know they don't go buying now.
Just one more point.
So.
Go, go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, I, I don't support it at this point for the upcoming academic year and it's really that I feel as though there's not enough notice to parents or students who have already purchased equipment for this academic year or will continue to purchase. They just need to have more notifications, they're not incurring that cost. And I also don't feel comfortable putting it into the budget. The policy is not really outlined and it's not going to be till.
Well, the policy's outlined, we just don't want to approve it until.
We.
We have the budget.
So I'll rephrase it to say, we don't have an approved policy, so I don't feel comfortable.
Can't approve the policy without the Chromebooks.
Right, and, and we talked about, you know, the, for the, parents can still buy their children the computers, they can come home and use their home computer. This is really just for the day-to-day in the classroom so that there's a lot of checks and balances for the teachers to prevent distraction and other website access for the students.
It's all cybersecurity that I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
No, I understand the security.
When they bring in their own, we can't.
So even, so even if a parent buys a computer, they can still use it at home.
I think, are you saying just this year, Greg?
I'm just, not yet, wait till, wait another academic year. I get the advantages of it, I think they're.
The problem is we're so far behind now, the schools around us.
Yeah, we're about 10 years behind. And it's not a huge expense and if you look at the whole, the impact of the whole budget, we're talking about $75,000.
Okay, well, I've shared my position, I'm not, I don't support it.
From a communications standpoint.
For this upcoming academic year. It can still be communicated, I just don't think there's enough advance notice to parents and to students. You know, I look out for, you know, they've incurred expense already and now we're saying, well, you don't need that because we're going to provide it. And for a family that might be on the fence, whether or not to buy one, if they know a program is coming out that's supported by the school system, then they can wait. If there is a family that says, I just can't wait, the, the equipment I have broke, I don't have something, it doesn't work anymore, then we could do it like a one-off ad hoc situation to accommodate for those. But I just think it's good to have really effective communication to everyone to say, hey, look. Because I, I'm pretty confident that a lot of people purchased equipment for their kids in August, over the past six months or so. And effectively, yeah, you can have a backup at home, but they can also look at it and say, I wouldn't have spent the money on that had I known this was coming.
Any point in time we do this, that same.
That same argument's going to come.
It can.
It's all about security. I'm so concerned about security.
And I think the problem we run into is that we can't really communicate out without knowing that the budget's approved with it in there. So we, there's only so much communication we can do and talk about, but you can't tell them definitively that they will have one-on-one until the budget's approved. So even if we send out something in September, it's just a possibility if it doesn't get cut from the budget. So we're kind of in a tough situation every school year, regardless, that we can't communicate it.
Maybe we could meet both. Can we have a discussion or at least a plan in regards to what the communication aspects will be? A timeline, specifics, so we can actually alleviate some of his concerns. I agree, we got to communicate to the parents who are, you know, buying things or bought stuff for Christmas or whatever.
Can you just send out an email to even like the eighth grade families, letting them know that it's going to be one-on-one for the high school?
Because it's only certain grades, right, where we're only phasing.
Well, right now, this is third and eighth, so, right, we're third and.
Yeah, I think the big.
The current, the current second and the current eighth graders.
Yeah, I think the big impetus here was for the middle school. So I think if we were going to do it anywhere, we'd want to start at the middle school first.
Has our PTO minutes at the middle school for a long time? Like, we've been saying that, so they're not being suggested, it's being discussed, you know, go onto the board. They've gotten an update that it was presented to the policy committee. They got an update that the policy committee is bringing it back to the board, that it'll be voted on. They've gotten an update that it was presented to the policy committee, they got an update that the policy committee is bringing it back to the board, that'll be voted on, so. We have been putting the word out to families for exactly this reason, you know, with the holidays coming up in December, we want people to be aware, this is what we're working towards for the middle school, but always with the understanding that, um, it's not an approved policy just yet, we have to pass the budget, so that, you know, we're always talking about it conditionally. But have been working hard to give people the courtesy of transparency that this is.
Okay, so you have been sending stuff out.
Are you getting any feedback, Julia, like as you're, as you've been talking about it, are parents giving any kind of, like, this is great, this isn't great, how do they seem to feel?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of support from folks about the internet safety, and I'm not sure people knew that whole thing about firewall, cellular data, you know, that's kind of an eye-opener for some folks.
Right. Right, yeah.
But the idea that this could eventually, um, help with like backpack fatigue and stuff, that if, if you did purchase a device for your child, it could be used at home. And then, you know, we would, we would have the opportunity for kids to not have to lug their device back and forth, that, that was favorable to families. Because, you know, having to cart that thing around, um, is, is one more, you know, four more cons in the backpack.
Justin, did you have?
No, I was just gonna clarify, so, Greg, your concern, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but your concern is of the people who've already purchased. The fact that they can't take advantage of it, right?
Very recently. Yeah, very recently.
And I'm, I was just in my head thinking, is there a way to subsidize that purchase somehow, right, so that they at least feel that they, they didn't go out and make an incremental purchase that they might not have needed to? But that doesn't, I don't know if we can take their equipment and then make it secure like we would if it was our own, right, so.
I don't think so.
I think that's a big concern.
Yeah.
Right.
That's my concern.
And that's the concern with the BYOT that we currently have.
Right.
You know, and that's why Paul is making that recommendation move forward, and that's why the policies, because we have policies that save BYOT. We'd have to get rid of those to put in the one-to-one, but if we're not putting in the one-to-one, I can't take.
We can't write the.
Out the BYOT yet, 'cause we're still doing that, so that's why the policies were being kind of held for a while, we're not putting those into place right away.
Paul, what are some of the threats to security that Jerry mentioned?
Okay, I, but there's, how much time do you have? I, honestly, there, it ranges from, uh, let's say cyberbullying between students, um, all the way to data theft. Uh, to ransomware, uh, potential on our network, and keep in mind that, you know, if, if we get an infected device on our network. And listen, we have, we have as much protection as we can get right now, nothing is a hundred percent. But there are things called zero-day exploits, and they're just that, zero day, and, and if we get hit with a zero day, it's gonna be game over. And it will affect everything, everywhere. Loss of data, potential data theft, which is, to me, the data theft is, is a lot more troubling to me than the data loss. Why? Because we have systems in place to recover the data. But if the data gets stolen and then ends out, ends up on the dark web, that's bad for everybody.
The other, the other issue too is, you know, we're gonna have a lot of, um, very good discussion when we talk about this in policy, right, there's a lot for us to talk about. If for some reason this doesn't work, um, we're budgeting it, but if it doesn't work, we, we send back the seventy-five thousand, we put it in next year's budget, so. You know, but it, it's, we need to budget it now, I would say, so that, and when we go through the policy, uh, process, at least it's there.
Well, yeah, and.
Doesn't mean we have to spend it, right?
Right, no, and then conversely, I, I ran some math to figure out, well, how can we, like, kind of cover that seventy-five thousand through income? And, you know, I have ideas for the policy, you know, piece of that, so, I look at both sides of it. I just look at, you know, the economy is not the best, and parents incurred purchasing equipment, whatever that cost may be, and, um, you know, times are great, it's a little bit of a different impact to them.
Right.
But I, I, sorry, I think the, the key point here, and maybe it's beyond what grades we're putting these Chromebooks in. It's really educating the parents of what the threats are out there and what they're not monitoring their kids for now, right? We have a secure environment that's not gonna inter, interrupt the teaching program and keep kids focused on what we want them to see. And outside of our realm, you know, basically, they are in charge of their, their kids, and they need to know that their kids, as we just saw from all the psychosocial stuff that we're adding, basically, are at risk, and they need to be aware of what those are. We do, because we're on top of it for the school, but they should be educated on, regardless of grade, that these things are out there and are definitely detrimental to their children.
I agree, and, but you, but you keep saying should be, it should already have started to be communicated.
So it's a question of when do we start? We should have started four years ago.
Yeah, we, we should have started four or five years ago.
Right, we are lagging.
And Julie has already gotten it out to the parents at the middle school.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, educate, you can never communicate enough.
Right.
Bottom line, right?
Julia, was there stuff going on at the middle school that prompt, you know what I mean, in terms of.
No names.
Bullying, using computers, or anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, we, um, you know, we, we monitor the, um, the student use of our Google Suite for communication, and, you know, we do have an English bubble up. Those are the ones that we're catching that we have the opportunity to address, uh, but student discipline matters frequently include communication that goes around our school devices, you know, that's happening with students' own devices, so we're limited in our ability to be proactive about that, 'cause we can't monitor that.
So Paul, this would put the brakes on that?
Correct. Well, then, no, it's not to put the brakes on iPhone use and other phone.
No, 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 the cyberbullying.
Right, right, correct.
But I do, I do think that for sure, like, at any point in the calendar year, when we have an official word for folks, there, there will be some, somebody impacted, you know, to your point, that has, you know, just, just that moment made a purchase, so we do have to be sensitive to that, that we're, you know, we're asking for a change in how our community relates to education, we're gonna try to be as transparent as possible and as proactive as possible, but it, it is an adjustment at, at whatever point in the calendar year we say it. You know, however, if we give too long of a timeline, then kids will be stuck without devices at home, which people won't wanna buy in the interim, so there will, there will be, there will be an adjustment.
No, I know, there's never a perfect time.
Yeah.
Um, I'm glad to hear that you're communicating it, at least, you know, to the.
Kind of gently, because it's not official.
Right.
Just sort of giving folks the big idea of where we're, where we're looking to go.
I'd say kick up the communication then quite a bit, like for all the schools and say.
We only had somebody here from the Monroe side.
Yeah.
Yeah, but say.
If we have a strong, you know, we have strong support from, from the board with this, then, yeah, I think it is time to make that a much bigger communication, thank you.
And this would directly impact the, the current sixth, or I should say, the, the incoming six, seven, eight. And the existing eighth graders are gonna, the, the devices they have now, they'll keep and move on to, to ninth grade. So, I mean, it is being communicated, and, yep, I, you know, I, there's no requirement for the student to use the district-owned device at home, they can use whatever they'd like at home, but in the classroom and, and in school to use the district-owned device, for security, for curriculum, for, for learning, to enhance learning. Make sure that the students are all where they're supposed to be, um, and when we have a district-owned device, we can control that.
I'm sure, uh, when we discuss the policy, a lot of this will, will, will continue, a lot of things to consider, um.
But tonight we have to pass a budget.
Tonight we have to pass a budget, so I, I wanna get back to budget. Any other comments on anything, Jeff?
Uh, the, the ten-month principal, I, I, it's more of a process, I guess, is the ten-month part of this gonna be a problem hiring for?
No, it'd be the opposite.
I'll, I'll apply, can I, can I list something?
It will be the opposite.
It'll be the opposite, 'cause most administrators are twelve months, and there's gonna be a lot, there's gonna be a laundry list of people who don't wanna work.
Yeah, there are people who definitely.
And, and the position's prorated for ten months, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And is that why you picked financials, financially, or budget for ten months, or is there, okay?
Yes. And really, quite honestly, now, our, our elementary principals, they work twelve months.
Right, so you feel like you don't, they don't need that so much support in the summer, more in the school year, okay?
So the second part of my question would be, is the ten months gonna take care of what we need to be, to take care of?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Lee is like, I'll take six, I'll take eight.
But to that point, though, like, if they, if you needed them to come in for, like, your admin retreat, so, so that they're a part of, will be their people, the M Ds, if they needed them.
They would be, they would be similar. Thanks, Chrissy, no, that, uh, they would be similar, uh, they'd be similarly scheduled as our instructional leaders are now, our instructional leaders, um, work ten extra days beyond, ten, correct? Ten extra days beyond the teacher, so whether it's five after, or five before, usually two or three after, and, you know, seven or eight before.
Jerry?
Sorry, go ahead.
Just one question on the Monroe L paving. Have you talked to Eversource about putting up lights? I know you had mentioned, somebody mentioned it, you had mentioned it, or Dan had mentioned it.
Uh, Dan mentioned it, yeah.
I had mentioned it.
It was paving and lighting.
Yeah, but I, I, I don't mind pushing the paving back, I was wondering if we had any answer on the lighting.
We don't have an answer from Eversource yet, but we reached out to them.
I mean, that's, I was just saying, yes, pushback, but I wanted to know if we could get the lights up sooner.
But we can still pursue that.
Yeah.
Are we gonna, so we'll pursue the lighting?
We, we, we could.
Just to see, I mean, especially if Eversource will work with us.
Thank you.
Well, I made some notes that, yeah, the Eversource lighting, but then also if we can possibly rent some kind of, um, lighting for the parking lots in the back, uh, for when it's needed. Similar to that they would have at events, please have them. 'Cause that's, I mean, that's also a safety issue, we're talking about safety tonight, um, that can be taken care of.
Yeah, it's dark back there.
Dan, you don't have that breakdown, do you, paving versus lighting, in numbers?
I don't.
Okay, all right, we can always address that.
Yeah.
During the year.
That's no problem, I was just, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else on the budget, Alan?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, the other thing about hiring an assistant principal. Obviously, with one principal and seven hundred kids, there's no way she's doing that all by herself, so right now, we have other people who aren't doing their full-time job, because they have to go over and help with the responsibilities of assisting run that school, so. By hiring the assistant principal, these people who are helping out will be able to go back to their.
And focus on, and their jobs, yeah, good point.
Um, if I'm hearing the board right, with the anticipated savings in insurance and putting off the paving, we're looking at a million-dollar savings. So is everybody comfortable with that, leaving everything else alone? Is that where, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I just had, I, I know, I probably found hooking the bear, but we had a little big discussion around transportation and the rise in, in those costs, is there any? Um, I know we talked about potentially reaching out to other companies who are like those runs after hours, I didn't know where we were with that, there's, I know there's a lot of. And I, like, I just had some questions too around, I know we have to drive kids back and forth to school, it's not a huge increase when compared to like the whole budget, but, um, you know, was there any talk about raising pay-to-play or anything like that to help cover some of that cost?
We have not talked about that.
Okay.
Pay-to-play.
I'm not saying I agree, I'm just saying, like, it's just some thoughts.
We did say we were gonna look carefully at the transportation contract.
I said contract, we haven't done that yet.
After the school versus school.
And we transport all kids regardless of how close they live to school or not, right? We're not like excluding kids who live within a mile or two miles, or like that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Just to be clear, that, that, you know, that does come by our bus company not being able to fill our contract, that comes at a cost of a hundred thousand dollars.
Huge. Yep.
Yeah, it was a hundred thousand, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know.
So we should look at that contract, see if we separate it out.
So we're gonna look at the contract, right?
We said we are, we would, yes.
And to put some teeth into that contract, we're, hold them financially responsible for not fulfilling the obligation.
When is it up for renewal again?
I don't think that's gonna happen, though, that's the reality, because.
There's no bus company.
Just no other company is gonna sign that contract, 'cause they can't do it, so.
Well, upon renewal, we look at putting that in the contract.
Right, when do we renew?
Ron, do you know?
They just don't have.
Well, we can sit here and not put it in, or we can take the chance to put it in there, and then they don't, they sign it, right, and then it's, then it's binding contract, so gotta do something different.
Ron's looking that up for us, but, um, yeah, we, we need to look at that, for sure, for sure, um.
I understand, it's a problem for everybody, it's just, you know, it, it comes at a cost to us.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Joe, is this something that the superintendents discuss at your meetings?
I mean, everybody is pretty much in the same, in the same boat, everybody's.
No, I mean, it's during.
Like, if you saw tonight, um, I don't know, when you pulled in, I don't know if you saw, there was a coach bus.
Yeah, coach bus, I saw it.
Yeah.
We had a basketball game, uh, basketball tonight, Steve?
No.
It might have been, it might have been wrestling, I don't know, whatever it was, but there was a coach bus in the.
I saw the coach bus, and I.
Yeah, from the other team, yeah.
From, yeah.
But do the other superintendents have ideas on how to?
No, somebody tried, I, you had suggested, Jeff, and I know, uh, one of them had tried to like, try to contract out for, just for, um, athletics.
Athletics.
Sports, yeah.
And, you know, people just couldn't handle.
Well, 'cause they can't find the drivers, this is.
Right.
I, I guess what we need to understand is, it's not the company, they can't find the employees, and yes, we could put it in the contract, and I'm all for that. But if they can't find the employees, they're not gonna be able to man the runs.
But we're saying if that, if we, if it says that, then they have to financially, like.
I agree with you, and I start off by saying, I agree with that, we, we do put that in, but what I mean, they just can't find the employees.
Or even split it.
With an exception there.
You know, like, or cost share or something where they have to be responsible.
Hey, guys, we need one conversation, sorry, go ahead.
They, they, our bus company is getting some employees back, like three of them, but they could change the way they do things. Have one bus driver drop them off, and another driver pick them up, that's not currently what they're doing. But you may be able to get some people to split a shift.
Then you're doubling fuel, right, you're sending two buses to the same location.
Hundred thousand dollars worth.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but right now, they're not accountable to that.
Yeah.
Well, yes, they are, they have, they have a contract that we.
Right.
Will break if they don't meet our needs, and if they can change the philosophy and the way they work, maybe they can meet our needs.
Well, they, they've broken it. They've broken it, where's the enforcement, we don't have the enforcement.
We don't have an enforcement right now other than changing.
Right.
Whole contract, right? But I think we look at the contract and meet with these people and say, all right, let's think a little different, everybody's got the same problem, but maybe it's because you're thinking the way you've always thought, right, you have somebody hired just to do the after-hours, but if you take the people who just drop people off and have them drive people to events, and have somebody else pick them up, it may be a different way of meeting our needs, just thinking.
I just think operationally, to, to expect a bus company to send two buses to the same location, I, I just, you know, operationally depends where.
There may be geographic limitations, there may be a way of doing it, they may be able to do it with something, right now, our needs are not being met, that we know.
Well, it seems like it's, it's a, it's a much bigger issue than our needs.
Yeah, it's not just my.
Right, so we, we have an issue where bus drivers, you know, just are, are not, it's a scarce resource right now, so I don't know.
Um, Christine, finish your thought.
No, I was saying, in the contract, can you put something in like, like cost sharing, where they're responsible partially for some of this, where, where we'll share it? Or something where, you know, I don't know, does something to consider.
And we could, we could propose putting it in. I, I, I know what the impact of that's gonna be on our, on our, on the rate that we get back.
Right, exactly, but, you know, we have to look at all options.
Yeah, and then.
Joe, are the rest, um, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You're done? Go ahead.
The rest, um, I know Ed Advance has a fleet that they do specialized runs, but do they contract out for sport events at all, or if, if someone had that idea, I'm probably the last one.
It's a good question, Ed Advance does not service us anymore, I know they, they ran into, they ran into a driver shortage, 'cause they.
Big drivers.
So they're not, that's not helpful for them either.
They were, they were servicing us for a while, and then they had to stop.
And it's the earlier game times that are more impacted, correct, like the, the three fifty, thirty, or whatever, the, those times, right, are the.
Yeah, it's one while they're running.
So like the, the seven o'clock games that are not as impact, aren't impacted as much as the.
We are gonna look at our, our small vans for like the smaller teams, if, 'cause it would probably be cheaper to pay a staff.
We've just gotta have staff that are comfortable to, to get the.
To drive it.
Right.
To get test certification.
Has there been discussion to change the earlier games to later in the C I A C? Or whoever does, or I don't know who does it.
Probably not, not at the C I A C, like, at the conference.
No, but across.
In the conference.
In the conference, yeah, just because I figured we're not the only school dealing with this, so is there, like, push to move everything a little bit later to help the busing?
Yeah, and actually, All-Star has been, as of late, they've been doing a little bit better job.
Oh, God.
Taking more of our team.
Okay.
Well, they ride-share, like, if it's like, tra, I'm just thinking of track, where there's multiple schools going to one location, can they, can we ride-share with, like, Newtown, or? I don't know if they're in our conference, but on a clo, a town close by, like, we, I mean, I know we, Special Ed does ride-sharing a lot.
Track will be difficult, 'cause it's so big.
Track's difficult, I mean, so wrestling's difficult, you know, it's a basketball, to be honest with you, the freshman and JV go together, because of, and then JV stays and rides home varsity.
'Cause there's so many kids. Okay. Just trying to think outside of the box, you guys have probably thought of all this already.
Why don't, why don't we do this?
That's what I was thinking, thinking outside the box.
We're not gonna solve it tonight, no.
Because.
If, if we can drop them to a game, and, or have a policy where the parents can take them home, we may alleviate some of this, not have two buses, two buses going back, and we get one coming back.
Why don't we do this? We're having a, we're having a policy discussion on Chromebooks, now we're having a busing conversation.
You're right.
You're right.
Couldn't you send the board the All-Star contract?
Great.
It's twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you, and then, what I could do, if the board likes, is I can make it an agenda item at a future meeting and we'll invite the bus company in and have a conversation, and then that would be more appropriate for right now. I'm reeling us in and moving along, right?
Yeah, cause we're not gonna solve it.
Ron, can you do that?
Right, exactly. It's just not having a budget impact, so we're not gonna solve it tonight.
Right, right, so, alright, so Ron, if you can do that, I would appreciate that, and then we can all read the contract, see what's actually in there or not, if there is any enforcement module, or what would we like to see in the next contract? And then I can schedule that, if the board thinks that's a good idea, I'll put it on the agenda and we'll get the manager in, okay?
Great, thank you.
Any other budget concerns, considerations before we move forward?
I had one with the social studies teacher at Massey, and I just had notes that, you know, to cut that and to utilize V H S for those students that would be interested in taking those elective courses.
Any other thoughts on that?
Could utilize.
Could I call out Steve? Yeah, I'd like to call Steve up.
Could we be reminded of what the courses were?
Yeah, because it's not, we have class counts of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
So, a teacher would have a hundred to a hundred and twenty kids that they see in their, in their schedule. So if you wanted to go the V H S route, you're talking a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Steve, you're page eighteen.
Page eighteen, yeah, I, I think, so I just wanna just remind you, we have, you know, in, in the social studies department, we have twenty-six sections with twenty-five or more students. One, two, two with twenty-nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. About twelve or thirteen with twenty-eight, a couple with twenty-seven. In the English department, we have twelve that have twenty-five or more, two with twenty-eight, six with twenty-six or twenty-seven. So this is about, this is more than just, you know, N H S and, and that. It's, it's being able to, again, keep our class sizes small. We have two instructional leaders teaching courses this semester. We could not run Modern American Problems, we had thirty-three requests for that. We could not run Diverse Voices, even though we had enough requests to run a section of that. We had to move Economics and Law and Society to the C T E department, which means we're not running all of our C T E courses because they took over courses that are typically run out of history. So this is, this goes well beyond just, you know, trying to fix it with virtual high school. I understand, you know, you know, on paper, it could be the easiest to cut, but in terms of needs to fulfill student requests, you know, we have a, right now, I think she's point six English, point four social studies, or do I have that back? No, I have it right, good. We would gain, you know, sections in both departments, F T in both departments, by, by adding this one staff member. You know, so, again, you know, my job is to advocate for what's best for the, for the kids at Massey, and, and that is adding a staff, but I understand if, if it has to get cut out of the budget, it has to get cut out of the budget, but in terms of, it's needed.
Well, I just, I read just the notes from the budget summary here that it's satisfy, satisfy student requests for electives in the English and History Social Studies Departments.
It would, it would help that, and it'd also help alleviate the stress on some of the other courses as well. You know, because when you don't run certain things, you jack up others because they have requirements to fulfill.
Could you go back to the slide with the enrollment numbers, Joe, if you don't mind?
Oh, wait, three seventy-four.
So between two thousand and eighteen and today, did we hire the same number of staff to cover a building? As if we, it's like, to your point, three hundred and seventy-four kids have been added, that's a significant, in many places, that's a whole building.
He has it in his summary.
Did we increase that number of staff?
We have increased, absolutely, yeah.
For a whole building, like as if it were a whole building?
I don't know, I mean, not, definitely not for a whole building, no, no. And I can say for Massey, Christine.
Do you see what I mean?
Yeah. The, the, the increase in enrollment a lot has been at the elementary school because of, a high school schedule can account for more students. We have large spaces available at certain times of the day where we can put a large number of students that don't have a class. You know, and, and to not increase staff but increase enrollment, all we're doing is increasing the number of kids that are in the cafeteria or are fighting for late arrival, early dismissal, et cetera. So there's been many requests by the high school over the la, well, I'll just speak for my time here, that haven't made it to this point. I'll just put it that way, because of elementary, you can't, you can't, if you have twenty, twenty-five kids, you need another teacher at an elementary school. We can have a hundred more kids at Massey not add a teacher and all we do is increase the size of our study hall. You know, and, and again, I feel like I've been pretty realistic with the, with the requests. I get it, if it has to get cut, it gets cut, I get it, but Greg, to your point about V H S, it would cost more.
Okay, well, that's good, I didn't know the price, so.
I get it, we could always increase the amount, but if we wanted to satisfy a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty requests, you're talking about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, and the reason, the way I read this here in the summary was, it was to satisfy student requests for electives.
It is, we, there's certain electives we could not run, we moved some of the electives to different departments. Again, we're playing the shell game.
Yeah.
Because we can at a high school without having, you know, again, twenty-five kids at an elementary, you're hiring another teacher. There's just no way around that.
Greg, we also have class size limits in our, in our contracts, so we have to keep an eye on that. Chrissy, to your point, seventeen staff members have been added in the same timeframe, according to Joe's slide, yeah, so. Any other thoughts?
Uh, just one about, Steve, do you think, what role do you think, sorry?
I'm gonna wait till you sit back down now.
Do you think that the fact that we're block scheduling has, I mean, would, in other words, going back to where we were before block, right? Would that alleviate any of these?
Um, not.
Pinch points?
Not really, because we're now at a place where we're running an eight-period day where students can take eight classes. You know, it used to be that one of the periods was lunch, you know, and, and we're currently running where lunch is part of a period. You know, and when you do that, students can take eight classes. When you, when you make a change in a schedule to account for the increase in the graduation requirements, that's why the schedule change was made, because with twenty-five, you don't wanna, you need to have more cushion than, than just, you know. Seven periods, six classes, one, you know, one being lunch, you're only getting twenty-four credits in four years, you know. So you had to increase that, so.
Interesting.
It really doesn't, I mean, when you increase like that though, there does need to be, or there should be, you know, kind of a phase-in plan of adding staff. You know, there's been seventeen staff added, I, I would be curious in how many of those were actually at the high school, probably not.
I was gonna ask, how many, how many high school, how, how many positions have we added at the high school?
I don't know, my first year, I know I took one away.
You did take one away.
We'd get it back the next year.
And I remember last year when I met with you for the budget, we didn't add anybody, so.
Last year, well, for this year, we did add business.
Or the year before.
I think we've added maybe, I can't, I can't speak for Special Ed.
Patiently waiting.
Probably three, three? Absent of Special Ed. Maybe three.
Yeah.
Are the others replacements?
Replacements.
I think so.
So one.
So yeah, so put that, yeah.
I mean, I did ask the question, one of the questions in, in the pack that we had was, I think I had asked it where, you know, we had eleven point six percent increase in enrollment since eighteen, nineteen, and then I had asked the question, what had been the percentage of staff increase? And I think, Joe, you responded, it was a six point two percent increase in staff, and I don't know if that's across, it's obviously across all levels.
Yeah, I guess there's been one.
So that's six point seven percent.
Yeah, alright, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Anybody? Go sit down first.
I'll come back up and.
Yeah, and, you know, again, what we're talking about tonight is point nine five percent of our budget, right? Everything else is contractual, so. Alright, I am going to close out.
Well, since I've shared a couple unpopular opinions, I do wanna share a popular, I hope a popular opinion. And that was absolutely, I wasn't planning on being in the meeting on Tuesday, so here I am with my notes. But I firmly support the one point oh certified math interventionist role, so, absolutely.
That was it?
That was it, I wanted to share something good.
Alright, thank you for that. Alright, I'm gonna close out unfinished business and move to new business, which is the adoption of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Board of Education budget. Can I have a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Board of Education budget with the capital postponement as discussed? Dennis, seconded by Alan, any further discussion? And Ron, that's capital, sorry, Ron, that's capital, so it's not gonna affect our, our, right, yeah.
I just wanna make a general statement, I think I, we understand the needs. I, I think, just looking at the budget, when you look at it over the last ten years, even when we were in an enrollment reduction and a staff reduction, budget still increased, right? The budget's increased year over year over year, and now it's increasing at an exponential rate. We understand some of the needs there, but it's not a sustainable path, right? And at some point, it's gotta be addressed because we can't continue to go to taxpayers and just expect them to dole out more when every day they're making less, right? And, and, you know, from an economic perspective, the outlook does not look good, we're gonna be reaching into their pockets to ask for more at a time where they're probably, you know, the economy's gonna turn. So I think we just, I don't know what the answer is, but we can't continue to just increase budget year over year over year and now, you know, at exponential rates, and expect there not to be some type of ripple effect or repercussion for it. So just a general statement, but, you know, you know, like Thomas Sowell said, no solutions, only trade-offs. At some point, we've gotta make some, some tough decisions, so.
Yeah, yep, and we, and we knew this was coming with the, you know, more grant money and, and all that, we, we knew about this and, you know, we're all very well-prepared and we are all taxpayers in this town too. So we, we do take it seriously, we do look at every line, and I thank the board because I think all of us did, you know, our homework, meeting with the department heads, and we don't take this lightly, so. Any further discussion?
I think that's, kudos to you, Joe, your crew has been unbelievable, forthcoming with the information and firing away questions and getting it, you know, set down to the core.
Thank you.
This is what we need, not just what we want, this is what we need, and discerning those two things is a big difference. And you're right, Jeff, it's a, it's a hell of an ask, but, you know, as, as Dave said, you know, what we have control of is like point nine three. You know, it's like, contractually, salaries go up, healthcare costs go up, everything's going up, we understand, but there's only so much we can control.
Yeah, I think it's more, you know, a gen, I totally understand the dynamics there, but not sustainable, right? And so I think that's, it's gonna come to a head at some point, right? I'd love to get more proactive about it and figure it out before it does.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Okay, s, any abstain, uh, I'm sorry, any against? One, Greg, any, that's everybody, right, no abstentions, motion passes, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to new business number B, curriculum, new course, first review. Joe, you wanna do an intro?
Absolutely, come on up, Allison, and Mike, are you coming up too? Oh, Mark, oh, good. I wanna introduce you to Massey's new teacher this year.
Hello.
Hi.
Allison Danson.
This decade, she's the new teacher this decade.
We are gonna talk about the C T E course, just come to curriculum council, I will. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah.
Hey, everyone, we should only be about an hour or so. We're happy to be here tonight with the new Massey business teacher, Allison Danson, to talk about this new class, which I think is, you're gonna find it to be pretty dynamic, called Business Management. One of the things I wanted to say is that in the C T E department, what, we live by the credo of linking school to career and school to life. As you probably know, plenty of students who graduate from Massey High School go into, study business, you know, beyond Massey High School. It's a very popular thing to major in among our students beyond Massey. But it's also very important, some of the skills that are gonna be presented to you tonight that students are gonna learn about, just very important skills for anybody. You don't have to be a business person to need these types of management skills in life. So that's something that we always consider when we talk about our classes in C T E. We're really fortunate that Allison comes to us, she, you know, we turned her into a Massey Panther this year, and we're really happy to have her, she has a lot of experience, she comes to us from Fairfield Ward High School, and I'm gonna let her lead the presentation now, so.
Thank you, yeah, I am new here and I'm loving it, I am not new to teaching, I did spend fourteen years there prior to making the switch to come here, and everyone said there's something special about Monroe, I'm definitely finding that to be true. So I'd like to talk to you guys just a little bit about our course, Business Management. While I was doing that, I thought I could pass the proposed book rounds, you could have a chance to look at it. So just like, what is Business Management? It is an introductory course that's going to expose students to a wide variety of management concepts. It's including roles, responsibilities, skills, successful leaders, team building, problem solving. So some of us might have thought about it in the past a little bit more from, less coming from like a people perspective, and management has really switched to focus on a lot of those different things, like as a human resource. So it's going to be applicable for a lot of different job positions, right? So this is our vertical team that is in support of the course being added, as you can see, members from Central Office here at Massey as well, and then also our entire C T E business department. This was our proposed timeline, we presented to curriculum council, we have been added as course pending board approval, just so the students are aware that we are hoping to get this course up and running, since we are right in course section right now. And then here we are presenting to you, this goes well, fingers crossed, we are running this for the fall twenty twenty-four school year. Just some of the rationale behind it, you know, we wanted to develop this course that's going to really help students focus on some soft skills, some integrity, dependability, effective communication, empathy, critical thinking, adaptability, problem solving, right? So we're gonna focus a lot of that, about that, we're gonna focus on considerations of leadership, what makes a good leader. It's going to go across lots of disciplines, you're going to see towards the end how it aligns very nicely with our vision of a graduate, and this is going to add an additional pathway for Perkins Grants. So I don't know if you are familiar with the Perkins Funding, but a lot of our supplies and things that enrich our courses for C T E comes from the Perkins Grant, and management's a pathway that we didn't currently have, but will open us up to more funding from them as well.
I like that.
Right, I know. So districts that this is currently offered in, you can see it's very heavy, in Fairfield County, it's a very popular course. My previous school district, we taught it for a very long time there, very popular, it ran all the time, year after year, multiple sections, and the students really got a lot out of it when they were coming back to talk to us about things that they appreciated when they went to college or trade school or beyond, right? Because not everyone's going to a four-year institution, but they did get a lot out of this particular course. So our scope and our sequence, we would be looking at the very beginning, just introducing students, what is management? Giving them the basic concept, the basic functions that are associated with it. We would move into a little bit on management theories, the history, the start of it, of it and the Industrial Revolution. We'll talk about theories that went well, theories that didn't, ones that are popular now, why they are, the way they are. We'll look at business structure and organizations, so, you know, our limited liability corporations or our proprietorships. We'll look at the organizational structures, like it's, you know, a company that has a C E O or a board of directors versus, you know, a sole proprietor. So look at some of those different things, we'll focus on leadership in Unit Four, because not every manager is a leader, so what makes a good leader, what are characteristics of a successful leader? Lot of role play, some different hands-on activities to really get them through so they can get a better understanding of what it is to be a leader and how to be a good, effective one, right? Because our students are going to go onto a lot of different pathways, but by the time they're our age, they're hopefully going to be leading others in whatever it is they're doing, business or otherwise. There's room for a lot of cross-curricular, so in business operations, in my previous district, we partnered with Culinary and we had an awesome project where they created like a food truck business. So there's a lot of room there to work with other subject areas within our building. And then ending out with business ethics and corporate social responsibility, just examining like that trend of social responsibility and sustainability. And then ending out with business ethics and corporate social responsibility, just examining like that trend of social responsibility and sustainability as it applies to business. What is the manager's role and that sort of thing? So on the next slide, these are all the different ways that we feel it's going to apply to a vision of a graduate. And I have a great quote that I pulled from Forbes that talks about what it is to be business, to be in business management right now. So Forbes dot com said, empathy and compassion must be the true core values driving your workplace culture. With leaders setting positive examples for their teams, empathetic work cultures encourage positive feedback, recognition, and consistent appreciation. When people feel regularly valued, they feel part of the workplace community. And at the core, like that's what we want for business management to teach the kids and so they can take with them. And I think that aligns really nicely with our vision of the graduate. And then, of course, you know, the cost. So if we were to get thirty of those classroom books from the book that's going on, it would cost six thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and five cents with shipping. However, Perkins has a whole application process where you can apply to get funding for brand-new courses. So we have already heard back that this course material will be fully covered by them. So if this were to get approved, all we would have to do is submit the purchase order and the money's already been set aside.
Nice job.
That's a good selling job, okay. Good job. Sold.
Oh, wait, there's more?
Yes. Maybe. Stay tuned, right?
Sounds really like a great course.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but that's the end of my spiel on it for you.
Any considerations to partner with businesses, bring them in, have collaboration, internships, if that's possible, or I just don't know on the ages and things.
In some of the business classes that we have, we've done some partnering with local businesses. I know Dennis, you know, we do a lot with the, the Rotary for sure. And there have been some internship opportunities over the years with local businesses, but we're always looking to expand that, so. This might be an opportunity.
Yes, we'd love to have businesses in, especially if they want to come talk to kids about their problems, problem solving. I think we're hoping to really start to make some connections. Aside from, I know that the Rotary does an amazing job with the Financial Reality Fair, but in addition to that, some other connections within the business, with the community and the business department here.
Yeah, kind of me.
Pretty awesome.
Does that unsolicited plug happen? We need everybody for this one.
That's true.
A hundred and twenty-five people versus the eighty we've had in previous years, so.
I think it's more than that, yeah. Because you guys have nine sections of personal finance this year.
We do, yeah. I think just around two hundred students.
Close to two hundred kids, yeah.
That's great.
Is any part of this issue, you know, process, like issue power or teaching people how to?
I'm sorry, say.
Is any part of that book processes that you learn in management, like?
Some of it.
Oh, right, okay.
Some of it will be like. Mm-hmm. Some of the, you know, the components, like what do they do? There's a whole, there's a whole section there about human resource and human research management. There's a whole part about how to hire effectively using di, like with diversity so that you don't just get one candidate all the time. So this book is actually really updated. This, I believe, was copyrighted in twenty twenty-three. The next versions that I could find when we were looking for them were two thousand, I think two thousand seventeen was the newest copyright on the other editions. Did work with some of my colleagues at my former district. Sacred Heart did approve this for college credit there, which is another reason why we wanted to make sure we had a book, should that ever be an opportunity for us, just kind of leaving doors open wherever possible.
Does it cover the various functions inside of a business? Does it go into supply chain and, and things like that, in terms of what the functions do within each business?
Yes, there is, um, we definitely will be covering those under the operations. This will only be a half-year course, so it might be a little more abbreviated than some, if we were to add additional courses moving forward. But the half-year does really complement the block scheduling and, you know, some of the needs for the students. But yes, we would cover them.
Any other questions? All right, we'll put this on the agenda for next meeting for second review. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's all right.
Another question was Steve.
Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Jerry. Can I have a second? Christine, any discussion?
I just want to thank, I do want to thank everybody for all the work, the administrative group that's out there, as well as instructional leaders, the other department heads. Just thank them for all the work on the budget and thank all of you for, you know, meeting with them and getting through this process. I don't take it lightly, you know, with the numbers that we're looking at. I, I hear exactly what you're saying. You know, as all of you, I live in town, you know, I pay taxes too. I have a mother who is on fixed income. I, I understand exactly. I understand the needs that we have right now and, you know, it's a challenge and we'll continue to work together. And like I said, as, as numbers come in, if anything changes, we'll continue to make those moves. But thank you all for your support tonight.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous. Good night, everybody.
Good night.